Would you like to start?
I'm sure. So what I distributed to the board is a it's a variation of the VLCT's model policy. I've gone through and made some changes to it. I think with only thirty minutes to do, talk about and decide what things we want in the ordinance. And I would like to talk a little bit about what's, what isn't.
Yes, please.
So
before we open the public comment.
We have an identification of who is present, please.
Okay.
You might help us.
Angie Rowley.
Mike Gardner.
Bob Jarvis.
Harry Percy.
Ryan Gudzian.
Who are you missing?
We're all here.
We're all here.
There's five of us.
Mr. Percy is not stepping down?
No, I'm right here.
He's required, this is Peter Hillman, he's required by law to step down. And Mr. Jarvis is required by law to step down. Your letter to me, Ms. Rowling, was incorrect. It's not a political question, and there is no allowance for predisposition of a political question in either, in either case. This is a health, welfare, safety, recreation matter on which Mr. Percy answered yuppies when asked if he would sign on to a letter calling for broad ATV expansion without any limits to the roads in town. He clearly has predetermined a judgment on this issue and under law must recuse himself and distance himself from all meetings. Mr. Jarvis, who is now quoting from the Vermont League of Cities model in the same select book handbook. It says if you live on a road and still mobiles are proposed on your road, you must immediately step down and recuse yourself. You can't have it both ways. They both must step down, please.
Who's Linda? Is she here? They can't hear us.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Where is town council on this? You quoted, Ms. Rowlings? Ms. Rowlings?
You're muted. You're muted. You've got to unmute yourself.
I know.
Priscilla, will you please shut him down? We are not in public comment. Thank you.
I object to being shut off. That's illegal. It's a matter of procedure going to who is participating.
Priscilla, will you please shut him off? We're gonna end the meeting.
Can I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting?
A motion's been made. A second?
Second. I guess for comment, that means the bullies win. Because we're being bullied out of even talking about the ordinance and meeting as a board.
Exactly, but how can we move forward if you can stop talking?
Well, that was, I believe that was the intent.
Priscilla, have you shut him off?
Yes, I muted him several times.
Albert, you have to turn his camera off too, hon. Remove him from the room.
I unmuted him. Hold on. Stop video. Remove. Yep, removed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I muted him several times.
He's unmuting himself.
Yeah, I thought I was doing something wrong.
No.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna try to move forward. Please, everybody be patient.
So I, I will rescind my motion to adjourn.
A second?
Well, we, I don't think we need to vote.
Okay.
Well, there was a motion on the floor and there was seconded, so we don't need to vote.
Right.
Well, there was a motion on the floor and seconded, so we have to pull that back.
Okay.
Right, but we don't need to vote on them.
Because we didn't vote on them.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I think, Mike, you wanted to start with by saying something?
I, I just, I, it doesn't matter when I, I just wanted to make, oh, I have a brief statement that I want to make before we go into public comment to maybe try to alleviate some of the long or potential large number of comments that we may get. So it doesn't matter when we do about, we can talk about the ordinance before we go into public comment. I can talk about it or not, whatever. It doesn't matter to me.
All right, let's, if it's all right, we'll save that for the public comment, or just before the public.
Just before, I'd like to say just before, so that it might, maybe it'll stop some of it.
We're, we're down to about twenty minutes of, of a, of a working session. So I think what we really need to do to make this productive is, is decide what we want to do, and then we'll take away homework and assign it to somebody probably new. But, but maybe not, you know. So a couple of things that I want to do, I, I think maybe I can read through, and so everybody understands, these are frequently asked questions that I put together, and we will add to them so that we can answer some more of the questions of the town. This is the board's first meeting on this ordinance. So I think a lot of the, a lot of the concerns, I think there's valid concerns out there, and that's what the frequently asked questions are, are attempting to address. I think when we walk through these, we will also get a good idea of what we, what we as a board want in the ordinance, and then I can take that away as homework and put it in. Does that sound fair?
Yes.
Okay. So the first thing, the first question I have is what is the purpose of the proposed ATV ordinance? The answer is, the purpose is to allow our citizens to pursue their hobby in a legal, regulated, and safe manner. Passing an ordinance allows for easier law enforcement, allows our citizens to way to get to their riding places, and encourages responsible and respectful use of ATVs within town. And what's very important about that is it also puts regulation around it, and it makes it very clear what's not allowed. And a lot of the complaints are the things that are not allowed.
People want enforcement issues.
Okay. So I'll distribute this to the board, and then please let me know if you want to see any change in wording or add a little bit more to it. Personally, I think the, the safety, the welfare of our citizens, something, some statement to that effect, go on. It is, that is in the ordinance. Will a club membership be required to use ATVs on town roads? The way I currently have it written, we'll have to talk about what we agreed to as a board. No, but to be legal, the ATV must be registered, insured, and the user must obtain a sticker from the town of panel. So that is the vision. That as somebody comes in, they get a sticker, and in talking to law enforcement, they ask for, to make sure you have one on the back. We were talking about one on the right and the left. So right now, the vision is on the right side of the vehicle, on the left side of the vehicle, and on the back of the vehicle, you'll have a sticker that is very conspicuous, so it'll be very easy to look at them and say, licensed and insured, legal, licensed and insured, legal, aha, that one's not. The other thing it'll do is have a, the vision anyway, is a conspicuous number so that you can see the number on it. If you can see the number, you don't have to worry about tracking it down, getting a picture, you know, they just look it up, zero, zero, one, zero, and line it up. Yep, that's, that's Bob Jarvis. So they'll know who, who exactly that individual is.
Well, I think.
Would there be a cost to that?
Yes, yes, and I don't have a pay structure, but we need to talk about the pay structure. And the pay structure would be something like, you know, it would be cheaper for panel residents than it would be for out of staters. Or not panel residents, I think for monitors. And then more expensive for out of staters.
So expand on that, Bob, um, a little bit. Maybe I'm just confused. I, I was thinking along the lines of one sticker on your machine with your permit number on it, and then in four inch, minimum four inch reflective numbers would be your permit number on three sides of your machine. Because if we have a sticker where a law enforcement officer is going to be able to see a permit number, in my opinion, it would have to be a, there's no place on a machine, really, with that size sticker.
That's a good point.
So, so I was thinking a permit with a number on the permit that has to be on that machine with matching numbers on three sides of the machine, left, right, and rear.
And, 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 and that's, and I agree, those are good things to do, and I think whatever makes it the most conspicuous, it makes it the easiest to identify the machine and know who it belongs to. And, and, and that it's legal. If it's got that sticker, at least at the time they got the sticker, and it would be annual. They were licensed, they were insured, they were, they were registered.
Right.
And that, that's going to be important.
Absolutely.
Also, they'll have a plate.
Right, to be registered, you'll have the plate as well. But then they won't have to read the plate number, and not necessarily, just being registered doesn't make you legal. Right, should this pass, it wouldn't make you legal on, on a town road. So, so that's the vision. I think those kind of details can actually be worked out in the procedure document. Doesn't necessarily belong in the ordinance. But I do want people to know that, what the vision is. It's important that we talk about it, because we want people to know what the vision is and how it's going to be enforced. Okay, how is enforcement enhanced by an ordinance? Enforcement becomes easier in a few ways, and we can think of other ways if we can. The sticker, one, the sticker will be conspicuous. Hence, an enforcement officer can easily tell if an ATV, UTV is allowed with a quick visual glance. Two, the sticker will have an easy to read number associated with it. So for example, if an ATV goes by a sheriff's deputy at high speed, the officer doesn't have to chase the vehicle. If he, she can read the number. For example, the number is zero, zero, one, zero, and that is Jane Doe's ATV. Three, a portion of the money collected by the town for the stickers will be used for law enforcement. Maybe even all. I don't know. That's the discussion we have to have. Four, law enforcement has informed members of the select board, this ordinance, if passed, will make enforcement easier and make ATV usage in town safer, less speeding to get to riding locations. The knowledge that an individual's ATV is easily identifiable. Insurance, insurance, registration compliance are, are a few examples. So if I'm riding my ATV and I know I've got my number on it, and that could be traced to me, that will definitely have a positive impact on my behavior, on the behavior of the people who are riding. And I have heard some from, from some ATV enthusiasts that actually don't want the ordinance because they know it's going to bring enforcement. So hopefully, this is helping, helping people understand why we're doing this. Four, is there a daily time limit to when ATVs are allowed? Yes, in the one that I have written, but that's open to discussion. It's a between thirty minutes before sunrise till thirty minutes after sunset, and then you're off the road. So no, no overnights. We have seen some complaints about parties and other things in the after hours. Quite frankly, a lot of those parties are motorcycles, ATVs, cars, I mean, that's illegal activity now. It'll be illegal activity if you pass a notice. It's things that people ought not to be doing. But I don't see that it's related to ATVs. That's after hours partying, and that's drunk driving.
Right.
Okay. What time of year would ATVs be allowed? We can talk about that. I'm not exactly sure, but it is, right now, it's got it in there. It's May first through December first. But we can actually, that's something that's open for discussion. Why would we allow ATVs on roads if there are currently no Vasa trails? Okay, the, my answer to that is ATVs are legal in Vermont and becoming more popular here and nationwide. There are many legal places to ride in panel, much of which is private property. The purpose of allowing ATVs on our roads is to allow our citizens to pursue their hobbies in a legal and regulated way. Where they ride is not the business of the board. That is between the rider and the property owners. As such, there is no need to issue maps of trails before passing an ordinance. In fact, an ordinance is required before many clubs, including Vasa, will work on trails, trails to the town. So, so I think we're, we, some people's concerns have got this backwards. They believe that without a Vasa trail or without trails, you shouldn't have an ordinance. When in fact, many of these clubs don't build or work on trails until you have an ordinance. What about damage to the roads, particularly during spring breakup? So riding on roads that could be damaged during spring breakup is explicitly prohibited by the ordinance. Now, there's normal wear and care that goes with any road, any vehicle. That's not addressed here. But as far as spring breakup is concerned and the muddy roads, we would have to issue, the board would have to issue those dates and those warnings, and we can get those from Joel saying, this is not a good time. And we can post it to the website and get it out there that during such and such days, because of all the rain, no ATVs allowed on the roads. Let's see, what about the complaints about late night parties, drinking and noise? I think I sort of addressed that. This illegal activity is not condoned by ATV enthusiast, nor by the town. Passing this ordinance does not allow any illegal activity. This proposal is for specific use during specific times, both time of the year and time of day. And we are told by law enforcement that this makes law enforcement, this makes enforcement easier. We've been told that this year by law enforcement. We were told that by Nelson, the former chair of the board, when he spoke to law enforcement. So we've been hearing that quite a bit from law enforcement. What happened to the proposal with the list of roads? And I'm, I'm trying to itemize all the questions that were asked. Of course, we've gotten a whole lot more in the last couple of days. Some members of the board have decided to draft a new proposal from scratch in order to address the complaints that the ordinance not be delegated to a third party. By reviewing multiple ordinances from many towns in Vermont and considering the feedback from our citizens, the new ordinance will seek to make ATV usage a legal activity within panel and allow our citizens the ability to pursue their hobby in a respectful, lawful, and regulated way. Let me know if anybody wants to chime in on, on adding anything to these. Because this will also, I'm going to take this as direction on what to do on the, on the ordinance. Somebody put in it, into it.
I mean, you, I was kind of waiting till you were done to make sure we get through your frequently asked questions because we have ten minutes left. Because I do have a question in number six, or I'll play devil's advocate a little bit, but that's, that's okay.
Okay, then.
I didn't really want to debate it because I wanted you to get through these questions.
Okay, let me get through them, and then we'll go back to the number six, okay? What happened to the proposal with the list of roads? I got that one already. When will this ordinance be in effect? The effective date, the ordinance becomes effective sixty days after its adoption by the select board. That is by Vermont statute. So we can't give you a, a precise date. It's the date that we vote on it, the date that we, if, if we approve it, if we all vote yes, or three of us vote yes, then it becomes effective sixty days later. What if I don't want roads open to ATV usage? If a petition is filed under twenty-four BSA nineteen seventy-three, that statute will govern, shall govern the taking effect of this ordinance. So basically, what that means is after the ordinance is passed, you can petition the town to put it to a vote. Are any, are any roads in panel off limits to ATV use? And this is very important. Whatever we decide as a board and decide to put into the ordinance, in addition to that, and I want to make this very clear to everybody, yes, while this, while Route three forty-six and US Route seven are not deemed town roads. Use of ATVs on seven and on three forty-six is illegal, and we have no control to make that legal. It's not legal to, to use ATVs on those roads. And it won't be with an ordinance either. The way that I have this written is, but that's open for input, is, is all roads. And that's so that you, people can get to, you know, if you call me. Yeah, that's right, to get to point A to point B and not have restrictions on how to get there.
Well, I think that's, I think that's going to be a debate.
I'm, I'm sure it is, but I do want to make the other point. I do want to make this point too, that in the ordinance itself, it explicitly prohibits back and forth riding on the roads. The roads are not trails. They are a way to get from, from where you are to where you're going to ride. They are not to make the, the, the town roads are riding locations.
Right.
That's, that's a very important distinction. Because we've heard multiple times that we're opening the roads as trails, and we're not. Or the, the ordinance does not propose to do that.
That becomes, that becomes an enforcement issue.
Right, we have a large family. Do I need to buy a sticker for each machine in my family? Well, I'm not even going to bother to answer that. The thought was that we would offer like family discounts and things, but we can talk about that when we start talking about price. If the ordinance pass, passes, can I gas up at Stewart's? My answer to this is unfortunately, no. Stewart's is on Route seven, and by state law, Route seven is off limits. The railroad tracks are also off limits and extremely dangerous. Unfortunately, that's where a lot of people ride. Won't opening roads to ATV use invite trespassing on private property? Trespassing should be reported to the appropriate law enforcement. The proposed ordinance has fines outlined for many violations, including trespassing. In addition, the select board would have the authority, this was very important, I really like this clause in here. It has a structured fines, and we can talk about how much this fine should be, first offense, second offense, and third offense. It also gives the board the authority to repeal somebody's right to ride after one offense. And it's, you know, if somebody came off the mountain forty-five minutes after sunset, I, I'm going to treat that personally as a first offense, and they go on to a second offense, or hopefully learn his lesson and not do anything. If somebody is actually targeting other citizens engaged in vandalism or something along those lines, that's not a first offense. That's, that's breaking the law. You lose your right to ride. You lose your, you lose your privileges to use our roads. And, and we could also bring law enforcement on if they've broken any other laws. So that's not the kind of thing that's going to be tolerated. And that's why that's there. It gives us the authority to pull somebody's, pull somebody's privilege to ride based on our judgment after a single offense.
Wouldn't you have to have law enforcement in on that as well?
Well, not to pull their privilege, because we control that. We're the ones issuing the stickers.
We're, we're issuing the permit.
So we're in control of those, we're in control of those permits.
The, the select board ultimately would be governed by, this would be the best way.
Well, I'm just saying, like, if there was, like, theft or something like that, wouldn't you have?
Well, yeah, at that point. But if somebody's, if somebody's, after they just graded Mount Anthony Road, if somebody's up there doing donuts on Mount Anthony Road, and we find out that it's zero, zero, one, I, I would say, you know what, you're done. I know he's dead.
Yeah, that's it, that's, and that's where I am too.
Right, right.
I mean, somebody gets into a. If somebody is tearing up a field and damaging our farmers, I'm not going to have any sympathy for them.
Okay.
And if somebody's threatening people, I'm not going to have any sympathy for them either.
Okay.
So I thought there were going to be public hearings. That was the last one. Now, in the last board, we did have a couple of, of, of public meetings, and I have to be careful of my words were parsed last year, and I called it a hearing or a public meeting or whatever. Informational. But, or informational settings. Right now, I'm of the mindset, I don't know how the board feels, that I don't want to bring together two explosive groups that feel very strongly about an issue. I think it was our, it is our job as elected officials to decide how we want to pass an ordinance. And there's remediation in here. If people don't like it, they do have, the law sets it out very clearly that you can, you can petition for a vote. And I think we need to decide what is best for panel. We need to do our research. We need to reach out to the other towns. We need to reach out to law enforcement. We need to see how others have done it, and what their experience was after passing it. And I have done some of that, and so far, the experiences that I've heard of have been positive. Even from people who opposed it and voted no, and who was upheld in some other towns, have come out and said, you know what? It, it, it really did bring more enforcement, and it really did make things better. So.
Could we try it on a, like, if we decide to make an ordinance and we pass it, and we go down it, could we do it for like a six month period?
I, I would suggest that we do it for a one year period. Put something in. And the only reason I say that is because it's sixty days from the time that you pass it, and then it becomes, and then it, and then they can't ride. Assuming that we're going to put in some, the time of the year, and then they can't ride again until May first next year. Put something in for the next board to take it under advisement. But I was thinking that too, that it might be a good idea to, to do it on a trial basis.
Right.
And let everybody see if it's actually going to work. Is it going to make enforcement better? Is it going to make, make the situation better?
Right, that makes sense.
Right now, you've got everybody channeled into one area. If they can spread out a little bit, that might be a benefit.
Right. I agree with that.
Sorry, so, and I'm sorry, you had.
Are you all set?
That, I'm all set.
Okay.
You said something on number six.
Number six, which is, which is, why would we allow ATVs on the roads if there are totally no Vasa trails? And, and you're in there where there are many legal places to ride in panel, which, which is private property. Which, which is true. There, I, I don't know if there's many places, but the places that are available for riders in panel is exclusively private property.
Right.
There, there is no, I, I don't believe there's any access to the tannery property for ATVs.
Not yet.
That's what I was.
No, yeah, but we should, we should look at that too.
No, I, I agree with that, but I just want to be clear. So, so what happens with this is basically if a property owner doesn't want their property to be written on, they become responsible to.
Could they post it like you do?
Well, but to gate it or cable it or, or post it or do whatever.
Like you for hunters?
That's right.
Of that, I would, I would actually think that if you were going to ride on someone's property, you would need to have permission from that, from that owner to ride.
I can tell you right now that I own thirty acres right now, and there's one person in this town that has permission to ride, and there's eighty ATVs going out every weekend.
Well.
But I'm just saying, and I'm just using it as an example, so.
No, but that's an example of law breaking. I don't think that should be permitted here.
Angie, it's now six thirty. I don't know if you want to start letting them in?
All right, just give us a couple more minutes.
Okay, put your hand up when you want me to start. I'll come, I'll meal myself.
So I do have a couple, I do have a couple of comments that I, that we can do with it. Right now, if you want to start the public comment, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to bring that point about because it's, because we're, we're putting the burden on a, on a property owner to not allow ATVs on their property if they don't want it, if there is a pre-existing trail.
And I don't want to put the burden on, on the property owner. I think, I think you should not be, you, no one should be trespassing on someone else's property without permission from the property owner.
Right.
But I also don't want to go down the path of a forum. If you call me and say, hey, Bob, why don't you come on down? We'll ride in the back. I want to be able to hop on.
No, I understand that. I understand. I'm, like I said, I'm just playing devil's advocate. That's, that's all there is to it. You know, that's, you know.
I brought that up too. Some of the emails that we received were that, just that.
So this is just a couple of.
Drive across their property without.
Right, so, so this is.
Read the number.
Oh, I understand.
And, and, and know who it is without having to confront somebody. I think that makes it a decision.
These are, these are a couple of bullet points that I want to make, and I, and I really want the public to listen to what I'm saying because, because I think this is very important, and I, and I don't know some of the position of the other board members on this, but it's my position. So, so I have talked to law enforcement. I talked to Captain Hurley of the Sheriff's Department. I have talked to David Frankum and Colin Fisher from National Forest. So the enforcement piece right now, which we're taking a lot of heat from email-wise, they, they basically, if someone is breaking the law right now, tonight, they will pull up to that machine behind it, whether it's National Forest or Sheriff Department or, or Vermont State Police. They will sound their siren, they will turn their lights on. If that person does not pull over, they will follow them wherever they're going at a safe rate of speed. But when things become dangerous, they pull back. Okay, so hopefully that, that clarifies why the select board is not doing anything for enforcement. We can't. Our, our, our enforcement agencies that deal with our area, that's, that's their standard operating procedures. Okay, and that's, those are the, the three people that I have talked to on that. Other people as well, but those are the three names that I'm going to throw out there right now. Um, and I, and I, I wanted you to touch on it, Bob, the, the volatility of having a task force or however we wanted to talk about it, I think is, is just asking for a lot of problems. I do, however, think that instead of, this is my opinion, instead of the board adopting the ordinance and moving forward with it, I say we just put it out to a town vote, save a step. It's going to go to a town vote. It's, it's very simple for them to, to get their petition and let the townspeople and taxpayers decide what, what they want to do with it. I mean, we, I, I, I think we, I think we draft the ordinance. I think we, as a board, draft the ordinance and, and supply the ordinance. This is the ordinance that, that we, as the select board, are presenting to the town of panel residents and taxpayers. And then let them decide because it's, I think it's just going to save a step. I think it would actually, if it passed, it would be quicker than, than if we just adopted it because they're going to, they're going to petition. It's inevitable.
I'm, I, I think it is, just my, my comment on it is, I think it is inevitable. And I do believe that if it passes, if it passes, one, it's going to delay even passing it, and you still have to wait the sixty days. So for me, I think I believe to, I want to, I want to make sure that it's us, that, that we're making the decision. But that's, that's me.
It's best to follow the procedure for ordinance. That's the legal route.
Okay, and that, and that is the legal route for following the procedure for ordinance, that, that is laid out. And in fact, we have from our town attorney, recommendations on how to proceed.
Well, right, the attorney can recommend that. I just, you know, just my opinion.
I, I, and I, I don't, I see. I, I, and I, I, I don't, I, I see value in it too.
Yeah, because it's, it's going to go to a town vote.
I see value in it.
No doubt.
But I think, uh, for me, I think we can do it.
I think it's our job to move forward. And to make good ordinance. That's what we were voted in for. And then if they wanna petition and go to vote, then we'll have to do it.
That's how I feel about it because there's two sides. I mean, I get, I'm getting beat up, but I got, I ran as support of an ATV ordinance or the ATVers on the other side of listening to the other people saying they want some form of enforcement. The ordinance will help us get the enforcement.
Right.
So I feel I'm representing the whole town still.
And I talked to numerous sheriffs and police and Bennington police and they all say it's better to have an ordinance with the roads so they can use the roads so they can control that.
Right, so they know it.
And then it's safer.
And the sticker is really key.
The sticker is really key.
We're in control of making sure that these are licensed, they're registered, they're insured. Uh, that's all in the ordinance.
Right.
And, and it's easily to identify which machines are and which machines aren't.
And if they're not, I would hope that the law enforcements would follow through and give them their-
Well, I, I just-
Tickets or whatever they have to do.
Here's, here's my thought on that. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna-
We have a couple more minutes.
I don't wanna go crazy on this stuff. My thought on this is if someone doesn't have their permit, they're not gonna stop for law enforcement. So they're not going to be stopped. My hope is, and I, I don't know if that would happen. I, I, I'd like to think it would, but I'm not too sure. Is that if Bob and I and Harry are riding our machine and Ronnie shows up and he doesn't have a permit number on his machine,
And you give him-
I would hope, I would hope we would say, hey, wha- what is he doing?
Exactly.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sold that that would happen.
Right.
I mean, not even-
From what I hear, that, that does happen. The legal riders wanna protect their right and they, they do not like the outlaws. They absolutely don't.
That's what I would hope would happen.
They're risking their, they're risking, uh, uh, having people out there breaking the law like that. It's gonna risk their right to, to use the road.
Oh, I, and I, I would hope, like I said, I would hope that would, would be the case.
And I know I'm using the word right and I realize that it is a privilege. I just wanna make sure because, uh, you know, your words are gonna be parsed very carefully.
I do like the idea that Mike brought up in the beginning as far as putting, um, on the side decals. But it's similar like on a boat. So you can see them better, the, the, uh, number.
Those were, you know, I started out with that suggestion and then all three of the law enforcement agencies that I talked to about that said the rear, the rear, the rear.
Yep.
You know, the, the National Forest.
Because they're behind them.
They're behind.
Trying to catch them or whatever.
They see them coming and-
And, and, and I like, I liked your idea about, you know, you've got the registration and then you've got the number. Because I, I, I think it's important that citizens who are concerned are able to identify that ATV.
Right.
Right.
And, and if you can see that number, you know who to report and you know what number to report.
Right. But don't report to us. Report to the state police or the sheriffs or whoever. Is everybody ready here?
Are you gonna do a hard stop at three minutes on?
Yes.
All right, then I'll keep track of it.
Are you gonna be the timekeeper?
I got it.
Okay. So Priscilla, we're ready.
Okay, so we'll start. We've got quite a few here. I'll start with the first one. Hopefully I get this right.
All right.
Um, I'm gonna start with, all right, hold on. Ask on mute.
Okay, I just wanna, can they hear me still, Priscilla?
Uh, can they or me? I can hear you.
No, the people out in the waiting room, can they hear me, the public?
Yes, they should be able to hear you, yes.
Okay, I just wanna remind everybody that we're gonna stick to three minutes, please, because we'd like to hear as many comments as possible. All right, Priscilla, you start. Thank you.
Well, I can get it.
Nice, 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 nice.
Didn't sound good.
Really?
It doesn't, I don't know, one girl, it doesn't seem like it can unmute her. Ask on mute.
Priscilla?
Yep.
How on the person that you're trying to let in and tell her to unmute herself?
Okay, Jackie Sedlock, you need to unmute yourself.
Jackie, are you there?
No, there's a button to ask to unmute and I clicked it, but, all right, I'll go to the next one.
Okay.
Renee, um, Renee, you need to unmute.
Renee, are you there?
All, all right, she should be unmuted.
Renee?
Sorry? It says, she's not muted. Now it went back. Renee? No, we'll go to the next one. Nadia? Nadia, you need to unmute your machine. I don't know why these people. I keep getting an interruption with a gym and I don't know what it is. It keeps popping up.
Must be trying to call in or something.
Um, let me go to, uh-
Yeah, Priscilla, uh, Priscilla, can you right-click and pass the hosting to, what, what is this one? Who's the user here?
Linda.
To Linda?
Am I available?
All right, hold on. All right, let me get to the, make, make host Linda, right?
Yep.
Yeah, make host.
All right, I did.
Okay. Now, let me see if, uh, I'll, let me sit over here.
Yeah, we don't have time.
Okay.
We've wasted, it's been ten minutes, so we'll let, we'll go over ten minutes, Bob.
All right, here, I want to need to see participants. We've got a few. And then, uh, uh, who was the first one that, uh, called in?
Jackie initially.
I had Jackie.
Jackie Sedlock, okay.
Yep.
Uh, Jackie, I'm gonna, uh, unmute. Oh, uh-
I, I think I'm the only person with a hand raised.
Who's that?
This is Merrill Bent. Uh, I, I'm an attorney for twenty-plus concerned Pownell citizens and I'm the only person with a hand raised and I'm happy to go ahead.
Yep, she is. She, I see her hand up.
Okay, um, go ahead and we can hear you.
Great. Thank you very much and I appreciate your time tonight. Um, I do wanna start out by objecting to the remu- removal of a public participant who was raising procedural issues during the meeting. Um, Mr. Hillman is absolutely a hundred percent correct that the procedural issue of conflicts of, of ish, of interest have to be addressed before the discussion continues with the inclusion of potentially conflicted board members. Um, please make sure my objection is noted in the minutes for this meeting. I also will ask the board at the end to directly address the two conflicts raised in the letter I sent to the board yesterday. Um, and I would like to, I would like the board to respond to those recusal requests. And I would like Mr. Jarvis and Mr. Percy each to state the basis for their refusal to recuse themselves from this process. I would like the response to be accurately and completely reflected in the minutes for this meeting for purposes of a challenge in the Superior Court. Um, my clients do agree that a lot of the safety aspects of the ordinance are good ideas that should be developed and implemented. Um, nobody's trying to stop people from using ATVs altogether. We appreciate that different people have different hobbies. But ATV users cannot be allowed to interfere with the quiet use and enjoyment of other taxpayers' rights to, to their property. And it cannot be allowed to pose a safety threat, which is exactly what's happening right now. The looming questions that have not yet been addressed are, number one, where these activities are supposed to be taking place? And two, how the regulations, including which roads are open and usable by ATVs, will be enforced? Um, each road that's proposed to be open for ATV access needs to be assessed individually to determine whether it makes any sense to open it, what trails it provides access to, and particularized safety concerns with respect to that individual road. Um, at the moment, as far as I can tell from the investigation I've done so far, there is absolutely no meaningful enforcement taking place. Uh, in fact, the, the response I received from the town to our Public Records Act requests, um, was that the town has no record that any citation has ever been issued for an ATV ordinance violation, uh, or ATV, you know, mis- misuse or illegal conduct. Um, the, the town and this board has an obligation to ensure that its ordinances are enforced. How does the board intend to ensure that enforcement will actually happen in the future? Um, the two issues- the two issues I'm ask, the two issues I'm asking the board to directly raise, I'm copying and pasting into the chat so that it's easy to know, uh, what information I'm looking for today. And I really appreciate your response.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, do we have, uh, um, do we need to address that now or do we need to, uh?
No.
Okay. So, um, all right, and then, uh, let me see who else is here. I've got a hand raised. Oh, I guess, uh, uh, this badge you can, uh, I guess you can put your hand in. Uh, I'm sorry, I could do that. There we go. All right, and I don't see a hand on anyone else with a hand raised. But I assume everybody's in maybe to watch.
I have a hand up. You just can't see me.
Somebody?
Say again?
I have a hand up. You can't see me. You can't see any of us, so.
Oh, no, I, I, okay. Um, uh, and you would like to make a comment?
I would. I would like to yield my three minutes to Merrill Bent, please.
Uh, no, no, we're not doing that.
Why? That's how government works.
Three minutes per person.
Three minutes per person.
I'm gonna unmute myself and speak for myself then if you will not act like a government. Um, I would like to know why no maps are needed. We still know-
Excuse me, could you please say your name?
My name is Jenny Dewar. We still need to know why each road named will be opened. Uh, uh, every road that you put in the ordinance, we need to know what private citizen is allowing people to be on their land if you're gonna open out all of our roads to get to it. I still, if, and I really think if, if someone wants to give their private land, that's awesome. I would if I had enough land to give away too. Um, but you should, um, then also give permission for people to offload in their driveways or wherever they can park on their land. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I, now there is a, there is a feature in the application in Zoom for raising your hand and then we can see the hand up. Um, so, uh, uh, I'm not sure that anyone else would like to. And I don't see any hands raised at this point. There's one from Renee. Uh, hang on just a second. Let me unmute you. And, okay, um, uh, please state your name and then you'll have three minutes. Renee, I think I unmuted you and I just see you on here as Renee. Can you hear me? Um, you might have your speaker turned off or your microphone turned off on your, on whatever device you're using.
Is there anything in the chat box? From them?
Let me see the chat. There we go.
No, Merrill put something, but I know if anybody else asked a question that way. They did the other night.
Okay. I would like to be heard, Merrill. Okay, we got that one. I choose to stay muted. Okay. Um, I, I'm sorry, I'm just now reading these comments. Um, and then, uh, Merrill, I've got your comment in here as well. Uh, and then Jenny had her hand up. Choose to stay muted. Okay. So, um, uh, most people are choosing to stay muted. And we're here to listen, I believe. I don't see a hand up for anyone else. And that's actually a good way to do it. Um, if, if you can't find the hand up, uh, functionality, uh, you can send us something in the chat and I'll go straight to that person. But make sure you put in there who you are. And Priscilla, please, uh, save the chat so that we can, so that we can see what it was. Particularly the one from, uh, Merrill Bent.
Okay.
She's got one and two.
Yep, she said she was including two questions. Another public comment.
Looking for who else, uh, don't see any other hands up. And I don't see any more, uh, any more chat. Well, if anybody else wants to speak, now is the time.
Hello, this is Tim Sedlock from North Mason Hill Road.
Uh, how you doing, Tim? We can, we can hear you just fine. You'll, uh, I assume you wanna make a statement?
I do. Thank you.
I'm sure.
The, uh, the statement from the Specialty Vehicle Institute of America. I'm not very familiar with it, but it certainly is, um, a pro ATV site. They have a section on their website that says, "Positioned in opposition to on-road operation of ATVs." You can read it for yourself there, but one of the lines is, "ATVs are designed, manufactured, and sold for off-road use only." So I just find it irresponsible of our town government to promote use that isn't designated by the, for these vehicles. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we got one more comment. It looks like somebody might want in. Um, if, if, somebody already commented. Um, all right, and does anybody else wanna make a public comment? And if you do, it, it probably works best to put a, a, uh, uh, to put a, uh, to, uh, send something in the chat because then we know definitively that you wanna make a comment. Okay. I'm not sure that we're gonna get any more public comments.
I think we should probably leave it open until seven o'clock, which is on me.
Yeah, mother.
Well, that's true.
Eight minutes.
All right, then, uh, um-
It's such a controversial.
Yes. I was expecting more, actually.
I was-
Could you address the two questions that I asked you to address since we're just waiting to see if anybody else will show up, please?
Um, I, I'm not sure that we have anything else to add other than what was already sent.
So you are not, you're not- You're not, you're not gonna address the two questions I raised?
Um, well, uh, all due respect, you are an attorney. I would like to talk to our attorney to have the response formulated to send to you.
I'm an attorney representing-
Already sent one on the direct, on the conflict of interest. Uh, and then explain how the board will ensure actual enforcement, monitor law enforcement activities and make sure that the police are fulfilling their contractual obligations.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, uh, formulate a response for that.
Okay, so you're, you're not gonna address those tonight, but I can expect a written response following up this meeting?
I believe you've already received one for the conflict of interest.
Yeah, and I, I think we rebutted it quite soundly, so I'd like you to follow up in response to that rebuttal.
Okay, then we'll, we'll, uh, we'll reach out to our attorney and see what we need to, how we need to respond to that.
Okay, I appreciate that on number one. On number two, do you really, do you need your attorney to tell you how you plan to ensure enforcement of the ordinance?
I think we need to reach out to law enforcement on that.
Okay, I, and, and that may be, and I'm, you know, I appreciate that. I just wanna make, I just wanna make sure that we get a response on these questions because they're really important issues and a lot of people care about them.
Well, I understand. And this was public comment. This wasn't a, a discussion.
Well, typically, public comments-
Now, your time is up, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
So we want, you wanna sit here in silent rather than allow me to speak on behalf of twenty-plus Pownell residents?
That is correct, ma'am. That wouldn't be fair. They gave you privileges that we're not giving anyone else.
How many more minutes? A couple more minutes?
Seven, six.
Well, we got six minutes to seven. Well, we got six minutes to seven. And I think we do want to give it enough time to be able to, uh, uh, allow anyone else to speak, if they want to.
Yep. I'd like to speak.
Okay, go, it's state your name, and then you'll have three minutes.
Uh, Mark Friedman. Um, I would like to know how you're gonna enforce registration, number one, because people ride now and don't care whether they're registered or not. Um, they ride at ten o'clock at night, um, you know, if you call the police, they tell you, "We can't come now because we're busy." So I would really like to know how it's gonna be enforced. Um, if you were proposing perhaps a constable in town that knew people and was here, I could maybe feel more comfortable, but it just seems like you want to bring more people in who don't live here, when you can't even control the people who do live here. And I realize it's not most people, that most people on ATVs are very nice, but there is a percentage that isn't, and I don't feel comfortable that you've addressed that issue of how you're gonna resolve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we, while we're waiting for other people, um, we can discuss a couple of things.
Uh, sure, uh, sure, and one thing I'd like to point out is that we, um, we're still working on the draft ordinance. Right now, there is one draft that one Select Board member wrote, me, and, uh, uh, that's not out in public. We haven't agreed on what we want to put out in public. So a lot of these questions, um, I tried to answer as many as I could when I wrote the draft. It may change, uh, it, it can change quite a bit before it gets voted on, or even if it gets voted on. The process is, we will agree to a final, uh, ordinance. The, uh, somebody on the board will make a motion. If somebody seconds that motion, we'll vote. If it passes, um, then it becomes the ordinance, and it'll be in effect sixty days from that time. And then during that time, uh, 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 according to the process, uh, the process established by the state of Vermont, you will have the ability to, uh, to, to force that to a vote through a, uh, uh, the, the, uh, through the petition process. I would hope that we put enough things in there that we alleviate a lot of the concerns, and, and that people realize that this is going to bring some enforcement. I truly believe that it is, and I understand that a lot of people don't believe that, but, uh, and that's, you're certainly welcome to that opinion.
So, so I think that's, to me, that's one of the biggest, um, sticking points, and justifiably so, is the enforcement from, from the emails that we've received and the comments tonight. So, we, as a board, are contracted with, the town is contracted with the Sheriff's Department. We also can control the hours of enforcement from the Sheriff's Department, if I'm not mistaken.
Hmm, per contract, yes.
Per contract, correct?
Per contract, yep.
So, I, I think that, that if it were a tremendously large problem on Fridays and Saturday nights, um, we could say to the Sheriff's Department, "Look, we're having a hard problem with, with four-wheelers or ATVs, um, side-by-sides, whatever, we're, we want you to work from nine-thirty till two AM." And I'm being hypothetical here, okay, don't quote me on any times, I'm just, I'm just being a, you know, throwing out some numbers. I, I think that would be, I, I think that's what a lot of people are looking for, is how, I, I think there are ways to come up with the enforcement issues. Um, I do know that, that, I, well, I don't know, I do believe that the Sheriff's Department, VSP, has access to side-by-sides and four-wheelers, so that if somebody were partying, um, in a certain location, that they would be able to respond to that location with their side-by-side and, and, and four-wheeler or whatever they had.
Because VSP can team up with, uh, Fisher Wildlife.
Right, so, so I think, I think there's, I think there are some ways, I'm not saying it's the answer, because I, I just, you know, I just, I just think there are ways that we could address the enforcement as a board.
I think so too, and, and we definitely talked about it during the questions and answers. I mean, we are gonna be charging for those stickers, which we don't do today. So today, we don't, we as, we as a board and we as a town do not ensure that people are licensed, registered, insured, in order to get a sticker, and once we're doing that, we can take the money from the sticker and put it toward law enforcement.
Correct.
It does cost money to, to enforce, and we're, uh, unfortunately, we're not a rich town, we are a poor town. We've got, we've got some citizens that, that just, uh, couldn't, uh, we, we need to be responsible with the, with the tax money that we're spending. If we're collecting money in order to make those, uh, ATVs legal on our roads, then, uh, uh, then that can also be used for enforcement, and that's the vision, is to use it for enforcement. And then we'll talk about how much. I, I don't really have a good feel for how much we're gonna collect on this. Um, but-
We don't know.
We don't know, but anybody who doesn't buy the sticker will not be legal on our roads.
All right, it says seven o'clock.
It is seven o'clock.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Hi.
Angie, I, we're adjourned, thank you, everybody.